Please call them all.
John Badger?
Brad.
Ben Mayhem. Josh Baron?
Brad.
Ann Miller?
President.
Bill Deckard Senior?
President.
Bill Deckard Second?
President.
Mary Ann Porter?
Thank you. This time I would like to invite Pastor Nathan Jansen to come forward and open this up. Please, please send your questions here.
Every time I come together in a situation like this, I'm always mindful of Romans, Chapter thirteen. I just want to read the scriptures before we offer a prayer. Let every person be subject to the authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those that have been instituted. Rulers without terror conduct, but to bad. Do what is good, and you will receive his approval, for he is God's servant, and you are good. Therefore, perhaps just give me over verse five. One must be a subjection, not only to avoid God's wrath, but also for the sake of conscience. So we offer our thanks for the authorities, for our ministers of God, according, uh, to this very thing. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we offer our thanks and praise for opportunities to gather as city, uh, government, and we pray that you will provide your blessing to those who are elected to serve. May your wisdom and your leadership be brought to those who are in positions of authority, whether it be the local governments. We humbly ask for your protection for our citizens. We ask for due diligence, and we ask that they will be given wisdom that comes from you as decisions are made on behalf of this community. Our prayers, we humbly bring to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jansen. You need to receive minutes of the money April twenty-second meeting. Are there any conditions or corrections to the minutes?
I believe we kept the order for the agenda.
Second.
The motion made second to approve the minutes as we sent it on, the parents say aye.
Aye.
Those none? What's your care is? Mr. Mayor?
I think our brief meeting has a very full agenda tonight. I just want to give you all an update on the ready day fund. Um, as of the end of April, our investment fund was at nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. So the current interest trends, we should hit the one million dollar goal that we set to hit by the end of the year. We should hit that by the end of October, so, uh, trading very well, uh, very good news. Uh, also happy to report that we have submitted an I U R C A report on time. Uh, that had been acknowledged and received, and everything looks good on that. In your hearts, in your, uh, do train session with the planning commission, B T A. Uh, just do notes, the planning commissions, and we were all over to attend. They're not happy to answer any questions. I'll probably do a more robust report at the next council meeting, but I want to be sensitive to the time of light.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? We need to conduct a public hearing this evening, so I'm about objection. The council will be reassessed with the purpose of conducting a public hearing. Public hearing is on ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, page eighty-three. It's an amendment to the Mark Dogg Code, Chapter ninety-four, zoning and subdivisions, Article sixteen. Miss ladies tables. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you. As the mayor said, you have the packet ordinance number two zero two four one eight eight three. Since miscellaneous fees that the city charges, um, planning office went through a review of our current fees. It's been several years since those have been addressed, looked at, and considered as far as they were, uh, the amount they should be, and were for us to, um, we're not looking to make money, but we're also hoping not to lose money. And so it needed adjusted, so we have put together for your consideration the, uh, new fee schedule there in the tables. Um, these are an increase. I don't know if Mr. Oaks might have some comments here about what the exact increases were, but, um, they, I think everything went up a little bit. I don't know if we can actually get across the board, um, scale or not, but that is, um, discussion. That's what you have before you this evening.
All right, your review of the current rates that are in effect, uh, they are over ten years old at this point. We did an adjustment for inflation, and it turns out to be a lot of things, almost exactly thirty-three percent. So that's what she's seeing reflected in these numbers. These are a little over thirty percent up. The fire numbers are based on that same rationale as they previously existed.
Any questions for Mr. Coffey or Mr. Oaks?
I believe printed on the, uh, second page on I conditional. Is that oral, or de, is four? And then on the right, it says not to you panel, would you guess something like that one?
Yeah. Yeah, so it should be more on I. And then the other, sorry, the other number was what?
Straight across, or is it the multi panel?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Coffey or Mr. Oaks? Before I open the floor to public comment, I'd like you to come to the O D H C's names, address, and help them with public record. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Since no one's coming forward for a public comment, we will put a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, eight, three. Oaks, about objection, the public council meeting is back in session. First item on your re-business is the first reading of this ordinance. Coffey, anything else you want to say?
Nothing else I want to say. Uh, this is first reading this evening. Uh, in, in future meetings, we consider a second reading, and, and then that could be a final, or you may want a third reading. Uh, this will be, these will not become effective until passed by the council and then published, uh, in favor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, eight, eight, two. Amendment to the amended, restated ordinance amended in the hand of arms. I had the end of the, Mr. Coffey?
We would probably have some representatives here tonight from Forestar in regards to this particular ordinance. Uh, if there is, and if we will allow one individual to come up, present, uh, three minute time. This is not a public hearing, though, so we'll not take that account from public members.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Koston. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Uh, my name is Sean Downey, Vice President with Arbor Homes. Also with here being the senior division resident with Arbor, the developer, Mark Mastoraco, Vice President of Forestar. The ordinance before you is a text amendment to the hand of arms P U D. Um, this amendment was first heard before the plan commission back on April twenty-third. Um, while outlining your package, I did want to quickly kind of walk through the four items that are actually being amended in the P U D. Uh, the first item is relative to square footage on the ground floor within parcel area one. This is forty foot wide lots within the hand of arms P U D. Uh, the amendment is to allow down to five hundred and fifty square foot on two and three story homes. Um, it would keep in line with the nine hundred and sixty square feet for one story ranch homes. Uh, there is provision to allow for twenty percent of the homes in that specific area to be below the five hundred and fifty feet for the first floor. Um, with that, all the square footages for the overall home size will still be maintained of the original P U D documents. Uh, the next three items were actually additions to the P U D. Um, the first is also relative to parcel area one, the forty foot wide lots. We would like to add in a combination to allow to thirty-five, thirty-five feet for maximum building heights. Uh, the that. Is actually an actual commitment that Arbor Homes is willing to. Um, for the fifty foot wide lots within parcel area two, we have committed to a Masonry Wayne Scott up to the lowest sill on the lowest first floor window on all front sides of homes in that fifty foot area. Um, we've also agreed to, on ten lots that back up to Artesian Avenue, we will continue that Masonry Wayne Scott down the sides of the homes and along the rears. Um, the last addition to the P U D, um, is actually by the developer Forestar. They've agreed to some landscaping enhancements along Artesian Way, and this would be inclusive of irrigated grass berm, uh, mulch beds, trees, ornamental flowers, and shrubs. As noted earlier, this was heard before the plan commission back on the twenty-third, and was given a unanimous ten zero favorable vote sent in here to you all this evening. Um, with that, we would like to request adoption of this P U D documents, as well as, um, requesting suspension under rules this evening. In one hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for the board in retreats to the seat? Mayor, do you have any comments you want to make?
Just generally, we should recognize that when it is, as far as we apply the amendments, uh, they have a design center, customers welcome to go to. They can choose more brick or less brick. One kind of floor versus another kind of floor, the slight fixture versus another long fixture. So they have the option, and they're customizing their own, and I would encourage you to do so.
And again, this is a first reading, so no action has been taken. But again, this is a little bit different situation, so we know first readings. This is amendment to an ordinance, sort of, then, uh, got passed by you, and then this is also, again, as I mentioned, bringing in these favorable amendments.
So we are able to waive the second reading?
I think in this situation, we could.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading, and to go ahead and approve, uh, ordinance, uh, two thousand twenty-four dash eight, eight, two.
Okay. First, well, well, that's two separate things again, so you're making motion to waive the second reading?
Yes, yes.
Suspend the rules. Is there a second?
It's a benefit.
There's that discussion for it, yes, on your legal description. I know I'm not. I may have gone on this, but on the legal description on the back, everywhere sits a homework. There's supposed to be corn. Probably restricted all the time. Real estate, non-estate business, but this would be corn.
Yeah, I believe it would be correct to, uh, council member, it should be corn.
It's, it's on their numerous office.
Yeah. And probably, maybe it's not this other problem for us, but, um, what? I, I don't know if that was a, just a misprint of this particular, uh, presentation. I don't know if that's actually legal, or it's a misprint or a spelling. But if it is, so it's script was here about the date of reading and recorded. We have to determine we're supposed to continue on that exact same thing. So it could have been air made years ago, but in this case it wasn't, because it was just recently, uh, purchased and planted. But, um, if, if it is in fact air in the original legal, there would be a script that was prepared and recorded, so it could change. And that would be done by the actual, uh, engineer or surveyor that compared.
Thank you.
So we can still move forward?
No, you can't.
Yeah, but I know there was discussion too, is there anything?
Yes, question on the floor. I just wanted to discuss.
Yes, I just want to know if there's, just going to pause a hold of anything if we, I know we've had discussions before about suspending the readings and passing on that. I know we talked about it before about that. Is there a holdup, anything up, the progress of the starting of the project? If, if we don't, or if we need to do this, I'm just wondering, but, so you are?
They, a holdup would be, they wouldn't be able to start for, you know, two weeks. And if for some reason we don't have a form in our meeting, then that puts them back a holdup a month. And again, you know, like I said earlier, this is kind of a different situation. It's our ordinance that's been passed by the council. This is meant to that ordinance that we've, the bank commission, yeah, and this is coming back to you on those modifications.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, uh, right now, there is a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Uh, it's been motion made second, and it has to be unanimously approved. So unless there are no call, what?
And who, who is the second one?
Uh, Josh.
Thank you. All right, Josh, let's, we'll just start with you. Josh Baron, your vote?
Yes.
John Badger?
Yes.
Ann Miller?
Yes.
Bill Deckard Senior?
Yes.
Bill Deckard Second?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, so the suspension of rules, as you announced, now, Ann will take your motion then?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance, uh, two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen, eight, two.
Sir.
The motion made second to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, eight, eight, two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Motion carries. Thank you, council. We have seconds reading and consideration on ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, eight, eight, zero. This is discharge of protection and elimination, Mr. Coffey.
This was introduced, um, three weeks ago, at our last meeting, the last meeting we had in April. Uh, as the first reading, I did not hear, um, any questions from the council for this, so this is reported this evening for, uh, consideration, second reading, uh, this would be eligible for approval this evening, if you said so.
And Mr. Oaks, did you say that this is something that, um, many municipalities have already approved something of this, you know, approved something this already?
Yes, and what we have a little bit different here is within their original proposals and our similar, we recognize additional amendments, and other things we brought before that, both the plan commission and the council. It is an HOA, and if you're a mayor of how homeowners association works, they have quite a restrictive set of rules, covenants that write what, uh, so that's what I was asking, answering what that the whole thing. Yes, about the amendment, which we put in the city. I'm sorry, Ann, I thought you were still doing, as I said, I. The first reading on the amendment, they, uh, they did with what, and waiting for the first reading and the second reading. So I was answering to that. So if you're asking specifically after this, discharge detection, we did that in prior reading, and this is one that's required by identical code. Uh, this is one of several future ordinances that will pass from identical. This is the detection. We do op-call, uh, screening and reviews on the annual basis of fifty-three op-calls in the city. And fifty-three op-calls, what you're looking for is exactly this, something that you shouldn't find in one of them. So if there's a discharge that's, uh, older too, as a color too, something you're suspicious of, by then, this was a discharge ordinance will go into effect. Tells you how to handle it, or the kind of this, and maybe, so that's all.
What better?
Joe, we had this, uh, discussion, uh, last time, when is it that we have a third reading of things?
Uh, it really can be, I mean, the council would request that there's, um, you know, questions that come up or, or changes that you would like to see, uh, in an ordinance, um, you know, like, I'm not sure if this would have one little more time to, uh, consider this, or maybe you need to go back, and there's a question I have, can you answer it? So, um, it, it, it can, it's eligible to be, uh, passed. This, um, is spoken to suspend the rule, and you could reconsider the first reading. Uh, second reading, uh, again, it's certainly eligible without any, and bespoke to the rules. Or if you need more time, more consideration, you want more comments, or more time to think about something, you can have the third reading. Thank you very much.
So any other questions for Mr. Oaks or Mr. Coffey? If not, then I would, there's a motion regarding the ordinance for.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen, eight.
A motion made to approve ordinance, it's going to be second.
All say that.
Motion is seconded on ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, eight, eight, zero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the second reading and consideration ordinance, two thousand twenty-four dash one, eight, eight, one, changing the zoning and the real estate. Mr. Coffey?
So if you second reading on, um, in the ordinance that we introduced as first reading three weeks ago, it's a real estate south of town, the joint's legendary hills, it is within our city limits. Resilient agricultural, the plan commission gave a favorable recommendation to you folks to rezone from agricultural zone to be rezoning. It's a five point three seven four acre parcel. So it's reporting this evening in form of consideration of the second reading, it is eligible to be passed this evening.
And again, that's the property that's down by, going to the, uh, west, and so down the lane.
That's correct.
I'll make the motion to approve. Twenty-one more forward, dash one, one, or one, eight, eight, one, I'm sorry, change of zone of real estate.
Sir.
A motion made second to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one, eight, eight, one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, I use consideration and compliance statement of benefits for tax payments. Aye.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, this evening in front of you, you have a couple of different sets of taxpayers, see if one came with taxpayer authority. The first lot, the last three that are under agenda, the last three are flattered in the colonies. And Michael Redd is here as their counsel, as their legal counsel. Um, I, I'll cover real fast those who are owed on behalf of Artesian Group. In twenty eighteen, the council, the city council provided a number of tax payments to Artesian Group as they started a downtown renovation project. Um, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but the earliest year those would have been, said within nineteen, but I believe the assessment actually started in twenty, April twenty-one. And so what we did on the tax payments, the original payments and subsequent payments for Artesian Group, was allowed at one hundred percent abatement on the new, on the new value for the first six years of the ten year abatement, and then the remaining four years would be a fifty percent abatement. So you're still with all the Artesian Group properties within that first six years of the abatement schedule based upon how they were taxed. So you would still apply a one hundred percent approval to those, to all of the Artesian Group tax payments, because they're all still within that first six years, once they were rehabbed and assessed, and then put through other roles. And that's what you would do tonight for Artesian Group, if that was all the council would be, continuing that hundred percent abatement in that six year that your preceding council provided as the incentive to the redevelopment project. So I would hope that this evening you would provide, and I think you probably have to read each of them separately, I'm not sure. We won't, didn't, council, coffee, that, each one, for instance, second, separately, that each of the Artesian Group's, uh, abatement requests, that we would get that hundred percent abatement this year based upon the C F ones. Remember, we didn't do C F ones for them or for Flare and Collins based upon numbers of jobs. Uh, Flare and Collins' project, as Michael told you, that, uh, started under Mayor Decker. And it was continued, uh, was done, it was requested under Mayor Decker's, uh, administration, continued under Mayor Coles, and then strengthened by you folks and Mayor Koston. And that's what Michael shared this evening on this as well. It wasn't about the job, it was about the value that it brought to the downtown and central business district that you did both for Artesian Group and on Flare and Collins. So I hope that on each of these, this evening, you would grant the approvals that you have created since, uh, recently as last year.
So would, would that just not show that they, like, I'm sorry, like, some are saying, starting at sixteen, some at seventeen, and a lot of them are completed by nineteen?
Right. So, correctly, uh, Clark Barrett, I thought we said, and I believe we did the, the twenty eighteen is when we did the first lot, uh, the main lot, the main buildings for Artesian Group. So that was approved in eighteen, the instruction would have started in nineteen, as I recall. Probably not those to be assessed until twenty, April twenty-one. So then six years from that would be the six years that you would provide a hundred percent of settlement abatement on the new assessment, the tip, in essence. And that, my estimation is it would have been April, probably started in April twenty, or twenty, April twenty-one.
That's correct, and for reference, uh, council approved this on resolution two zero one eight, dash five, zero, three. Uh, that was passed on the twenty-sixth of February, twenty eighteen. Um, I, I see that council, that. One of these estimated starting seventeen, the completion date was in nineteen.
Yeah, we got the four times. Yeah, well, the completion dates of eighteen, nineteen, twenty, they're like, some, we'll start with a thousand, I'm sorry. Twenty seventeen, across twenty sixteen, I'm just trying to.
But if I remember anything, council approved that night, that some of these had started prior.
I'm just making sure.
You know, we actually did a waiver of compliance, sorry, called two, uh, we had, um, Adam Stewart Wall, and Tom from Mars and Road, who came in, and Flare and Collins did. But so again, the, the completion date is different from the assessment date, so, you know, the assessment, well, we started following it, and it's later, but that's why. Clark Barrett, I talked to him, I think the first assessments are they doing from the beginning.
I'm just trying to make sure we're still aligned, we're following procedures.
Now, this would be the last, I'd say, twenty, April twenty-one, this would be our last year, no, it'd be next year.
Sure.
Last one.
And then they would slip down to the final four years of the ten year abatement, so a fifty percent each.
Correct. And our office does receive a C A report on assessors, so, uh, basically that confirms these amounts and percentages, and we are required to turn that into state work accounts, can you wait?
Okay.
Any other questions for Michael?
And if you'd like, I just had to decide to Michael Redd, you follow on Flare and Collins, uh, before you vote on these, please. Michael, okay?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members. My name is Michael. And I represent, uh, the Greens, L P, and. My name is Michael, and I represent the Regis Gardens LP, and nineteen, by resolution twenty nineteen five seven four, this council approved a ten-year abatement beginning with the twenty nineteen, paid twenty, twenty assessment years for three properties, one ten North Main Street, which is the former Kibbutz Building, two sixty-five West Harrison Street, which is the former San area, and one ten West Washington, which is the former jail building. In our statement of benefits, when we applied for the abatement, represented the cost of rehabilitation of three buildings was approximately five point five million dollars. The actual expenditures to rehabilitate the buildings were seven point four million dollars. Not to disagree with Mike, but there was a small jobs component in the application. We represented that there would be one point five new jobs covering all three properties with salaries of about forty-four thousand dollars a year. And in fact, we have two full-time employees that make ninety-four thousand dollars a year collectively now. The properties were rehabilitated to provide thirty-eight units of senior affordable housing, all operating at or below hundred sixty percent N M I guidelines, and as of today, thirty-seven of thirty-eight units are occupied. So I would respectfully submit that we are still meeting and exceeding all the benefits we proposed from the resolution, which was going to take up through, and therefore will ask the abatement to continue for twenty-four, paid twenty-five.
Any questions from the council?
What is one at a time, you say?
I'm filling the out, taking one at a time.
So let me ask you, so is that considered one when you're going to be ten through eighteen? Or do you have to go ten, well, seventeen? Just yours. Do you want it one at a time?
Ten, eighteen, these were.
Yes.
That's just one.
Yes, that's, that we, yes.
Same one?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, repeat the line before you start?
Thank you very much, Captain.
I will start, routine motions.
If councilwoman Jack, I'll take off, second. Make the motion to approve tax abatement for ninety-six East Morgan Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the abatement for ninety-six East Morgan Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for sixty South Jefferson Street?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for sixty South Jefferson Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for two forty North Jefferson Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for two forty North Jefferson Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for two ten North Jefferson Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for two ten North Jefferson Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to accept tax abatement for twenty-one North Jefferson Street?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for twenty-one North Jefferson Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for twenty-seven North Jefferson Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the ab, tax abatement for twenty-seven North Jefferson Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to accept tax abatement for twenty-three through twenty-nine and thirty-nine East Washington Street, and forty-one to forty-three South Main Street.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve tax abatement for twenty-three, twenty-nine, thirty-nine East Washington Street, and forty-one to forty-three South Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for ten through eighteen East Morgan Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve tax abatement for ten, eighteen, East Morgan Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for thirty-eight through forty North Main Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve thirty-eight through forty North Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for eighty-eight through ninety North Main Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve tax abatement for eighty-eight to ninety North Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for one thirty-four North Main Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve tax abatement for one fifty-four North Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for one twenty-eight through one forty-two North Main Street?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve tax abatement for one twenty-eight to one forty-two North Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for sixty-six East Morgan Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve tax abatement for sixty-six East Morgan Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for seventy-eight East Morgan Street?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for seventy-eight East Morgan Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for one seventy-one North Main Street?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve tax abatement for one seventy-one North Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for seventy-two North Main Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve seventy-two North Main, I got east Morgan.
Seventy-five East Morgan. Uh, that's P, correct?
Yes.
Seventy-two North Main. I show.
Seventy-five is P.
Is that correct?
Correct. There's a seventy-five East Morgan also, that's what I rest.
Okay.
So this is seventy-two.
North Main Street.
I'm sorry. Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for seventy-two North Main, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve eighty-eight East Morgan Street tax abatement?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for eighty-eight East Morgan Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for one fifty-two North Main Street?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for one fifty-two North Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for seventy-two East Morgan Street?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for seventy-two East Morgan Street, finally got seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for one ten West Washington Street?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for one ten West Washington Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for one ten North Main Street?
Sir. Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for one ten North Main Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Make the motion to approve tax abatement for two sixty-five West Harrison Street?
Sir. Motion made and seconded to approve the tax abatement for two sixty-five West Harrison Street, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. We always did the opposite. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
Next on up on the agenda are cripples for the claims. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have one question, the ice skating rink for the Jibokel, the Travaganza, does that include like, I mean, why they need that now?
Uh, there was sort of grant that we received from Duke Energy, so it was passed through, so there was no city dollars involved, it was a grant from Duke, Duke needed to release those funds, and then we got a deposit on that, and held it at the current price by doing that. So it was a sponsorship that was passed through because the RD projections is not a power one seat, Duke wanted to be a part of it, so they go through the city to get it to the, to the, yeah.
Very good. Does that include skates? I mean, do they have skates here?
Uh-huh.
Do they?
Oh.
And if you can't skate, you're gonna walk, you'll walk up, you can box, you can climb.
Good.
That would be for people like me. And it's still a personal default.
I make a motion to approve the claims.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the claims as presented, all in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Any comments from the council this evening?
Yes, I don't know, we're looking, I apologize, just prior to starting meeting, councilman may have sent me a text, as you know, the end of the school year is near, and so all schools getting their programs in, so he's attending a awards program for his children, so I apologize, I did not state that, you did real well.
And comments from the council? Any comments from the public this evening? If not, just reminder, all city offices and services except the emergency place in fire will be closed on Monday, May twenty-seventh, in accordance with Memorial Day. Those who normally have the trash picked up on Monday, picked up on Tuesday. The local veterans will have their annual Memorial Day program on Thursday, May thirtieth, beginning at nine o'clock here at the Veterans Memorial Park, at the corner of Washington and Jefferson Streets. Our next meeting due to Memorial Day, holding on, meeting day will be on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, seven o'clock here at House of Chiefs. We are adjourned.